I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for coming out. First item on our agenda is that we're going to recognize an employee of the month. And so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to whoever's giving him the presentation. Looks like Craig Gregory.
Matt Dixon. Can you join me up here?
Yeah, sure.
We just sprung this on Matt this morning, so... This Employee of the Month is especially meaningful to me, just for the simple fact that I have been lifelong friends with Matt since our days back in Oak Park. Matt came to work here 25 years ago. Beat me by just a year of coming on here. But Matt is an especially hard worker, puts pride into everything that he does. But I think the biggest thing that sets Matt apart for me, as far as an employee, is he will always bring a smile to everybody's face. When you're out there working in the worst conditions, Matt always finds a way to bring that smile to everybody's face while you're out there. And it's the one thing that I've always looked up to Matt for, is that ability to inspire everybody and just have a good time even when it's not good times. So that is why Matt is our November Employee of the Month. Thanks so much.
What does Matt do?
Matt is an operator for the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Sorry, I failed to mention that.
Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, next is our weekly commission reports. Commissioner Moore?
Yeah, this morning I had a meeting with NOLA going over the budget. Tomorrow, I'd like to remind everyone that it's Giving Tuesday. So we had Small Business Saturday last week for supporting small businesses. And Giving Tuesday is a day that is set aside to donate to your favorite charities. And they really depend on that. On Wednesday, I have a meeting with a constituent. On Thursday, I have a meeting with a constituent. On Friday, I will be attending Holiday Magic downtown. It's great if you've never been there, it's wonderful. And then Saturday, I will be attending the Christmas parade. And excited about that, that's always a lot of fun. And that's my week.
Thank you. Ms. McDowell?
See, tomorrow, I have my Board of Health meeting at 3:00. And on Tuesday, my Memorial Hall Board meeting at 8:00. And I will not be able to attend the Christmas parade or the night out due to family issues. So anyway, that's my week.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow, I will be having a staff briefing. Wednesday, I will be attending an educational seminar here in the city. And on Friday, I will also be downtown for the Friday night event where they have the little burn pots out in the middle of the road, I think, and people get out and drink hot chocolate and stuff. So at this time, I have a prepared statement to read. "I have been accused of breaking the Public Disclosure Commission rules. I am not perfect, and I take full responsibility for my actions. When I was asked to turn over all emails and text messages, including my personal Facebook information, I did so and deleted nothing. I do apologize for the mistakes I have made, and I will fully cooperate with the Public Disclosure Commission concerning this matter. Sincerely, Mary Gary Kronz." Mayor Gary Kronz. Thank you very much. Now we have a general public comment, period. And anyone who'd like to speak and need to sign in with Jamie?
We do, we have Debbie Simmons.
Hi, I'm Debbie Simmons. I live up in Hillcrest. Kathy, in last week's apology, you said that you're sorry for your, quote, "careless, thoughtless actions these past few years," and not for being honest in your position as Commissioner, end quote. Why didn't your apology take place before all the news came out in the Journal? Danger Cup gave you and Gary an opportunity to come clean. You lied in the paper two weeks ago and continue to lie when people ask you about your illegal conversations. How dare you lie to the people that put you in office? If you need to apologize to someone or to 10,000 people, you do it in person. We put you in office, and we deserve better than a speakerphone in an empty chair. You've woken up this town, we're researching your bad decisions and looking into what action can be taken to fight back. In just one week, 1,200 people visited DangerCup.com to read through the hundreds of pages of information that has been released so far. We're shocked that the mayor of our town can't seem to write a single sentence on his own. I'd be there, I'd not be there. We're also shocked to find out that Kronz and McDowell teamed up with a two-time loser for commission and another henchman to plan online attacks against citizens. How dare you go after Shelton to the top? For a guy to take his time to talk about the future of Shelton and then go out and actually do something about it, you respond by threatening him and attacking him online. Shameful. It's funny to see how over a year ago, he was previewing this mess. He let everyone know that Gary told him to stop making public comments at city commission meetings and that any conversation about his concerns should be made in backroom meetings, not the public meetings. Sound familiar? Your backdoor meetings are going to become a bigger issue. We've looked, and your illegal meetings will cause votes to be voided. I hope that it doesn't cause the city a major problem, but you're making this problem bigger every week by ignoring it. You've given all of us a bad reputation, and I sincerely hope that our elected officials will stand up and tell you to step aside. This isn't going away until you go away. Shelton deserves better, and we demand better now. It's time to resign.
Thank you for your comments. Okay?
Mike Olson. Seems as though we just completed Thanksgiving celebration. I have a couple of things I'm thankful for. I'm thankful for that you two don't really run the city, that you were smart enough to hire Ryan Wheaton to do that for us, because your lack of leadership is appalling. And I can't imagine how the city would be if it was you guys actually making decisions that meant something to the citizens. Getting back to your one thing that you did right was hire Mr. Wheaton. And I think what he's done for this city is incredible. He's promoted people from within, such as Craig Gregory, Mark Ziegler, hired a city attorney that was from Shelton, Jamie, many people. Due to his leadership, the city is running really, really well. And I bring this up because over the last few weeks, there's been this undercurrent. One was the mayor criticizing public staff for bringing him information he didn't like and then asking them if it was truthful, in public. These people work really hard, they have no political agenda, they're doing their job on behalf of the city. Commissioner McDowell's comments on Facebook are very demeaning to the citizens and to staff. I can't imagine the morale if you guys stay on and continue this pattern that you've demonstrated in your lack of leadership. I'm also saying this because there's also some undercurrents out there that you're going to make some decisions that are contrary to the city's best interests, that we're watching, that I don't believe now's the time to retaliate. I believe that you're listening to some people in public that are giving out misinformation. And I think you need to really step up your leadership now, if you hope to even retain your seats. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? All right. Next, we're going to go into the business agenda part of our meeting. And the first item is a resolution, and it is going to be presented to us by our police chief, Darren Moody.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Mine's pretty brief today. As you know, as the vehicles in the city become old and fall into disrepair, it becomes more and more costly to repair them. For that, I'm asking that you allow us to surplus two vehicles that were prior patrol cars in the city, a 2003 Crown Victoria and another 2003 Crown Victoria, and request that the proceeds from the sale of those vehicles be used to offset future repairs and future vehicle costs within the city. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So when you talked about, I looked on here, and it says no residual value. So you're going to, you just sell it to the junkyard or something?
No, we'll sell them. When we say residual value, we offer them to other department heads if there's a need in the city for these vehicles, based on what it's costing us just to keep these things alive. It really has no value to any other department within the city.
All right. Any more questions or comments for our police chief concerning this item?
I have none.
I think you're doing a great job there, Mr. Moody. And I think that we concur to place this item on the action agenda for December 4th, 2017. And we do concur. Thank you. All right. Item number two is an ordinance. And this ordinance is also going to be asking for a first reading. And so, at this time, I will turn this over to our Public Works Director, Craig Gregory.
Thanks, Mayor Commissioners. As you voted on a few weeks back, the increase to the water rates is the first one that we're presenting. And within the packet, you will see the rate adjustments to reflect the 10% increase for 2018 through 2021, and the 3% increase for 2022 and 23. Those numbers and ordinance have been reviewed by NOLA and her staff, also the city attorney, and the assistant city manager also. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Questions or comments? This appears to be what we agreed to do. And so, hearing no other questions or comments at this time, it appears we concur to place this on the December 4th, 2017 action agenda. And it looks like we need a first reading on this ordinance.
Yes. Ordinance number 1910-1217, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending Chapter 15.28 of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to water rates.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number three is another ordinance. This is involving our city's sewer, I believe. And you, again, Mr. Gregory, are going to talk to us about that.
So again, this just reflects what was voted on a few weeks ago to change the Shelton Municipal Code to reflect a 0% increase for 2018, a 4% increase for each of the years from 2019 through 2023. And again, this has been reviewed by city staff to make sure that it is accurate.
Any questions or comments for Craig Gregory? I would like to remind the public that I did support a policy that would have cut our sewer rates by 11% in 2018, and that I did not vote for this. But there's only three votes, and it is the will of this commission to move this forward at a compromise, which I believe was a 0, increase in sewer rates for 2018. Any other questions or comments for Craig Gregory?
I just had a question about that. That is, I believe, what we agreed to, definitely. But if, I just, what was the following increase? If we had reduced the, if we had decreased next year, then what was the increase the year after that? Wasn't that a 10% increase the year after that?
I don't remember right offhand. I think you're fairly close.
But it was a substantial increase?
It was a double-digit increase, yes.
Okay, so by going with the 4%, it will be a more regular increase?
After freezing it in 2018, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, could we please have a first reading of this ordinance?
Ordinance number 1911-1217, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, relating to sewer services, I'm sorry, to sewer service, amending Shelton Municipal Code Sections 14.18.010 through 14.28.040.
And it appears we concur to place this action item on the December 4th, 2017 agenda, action item agenda. All right, next is a resolution. Another, this is item number four. And at this time, it's, Jamie Aug is going to present that to us.
Yes. So Mason Transit Authority Board is asking for your consideration in their composition board. They're changing that up. The county had to also adopt a resolution, so they're asking for your guys' consideration in doing that, something that they are required to do per RCW. And that's something has not happened before, but it will come forward every four years in the future. So we're asking that you agree to put that on the action agenda for the next meeting of December 4th.
So is there any other questions or comments concerning this issue?
I'll just say that I was on the board of the Mason Transit Authority, on the board that reviewed this, and we felt like this was the most equitable and very similar to what we're doing now, as far as one city representative on that. And so, the other five members, there'll be three members from each district. And so, in our district, it will be one city council member and one, whoever is the county commissioner over that. And so, we will, between us, be figuring out who we will try to get to apply for that position, so that we have equitable representation in each district, so.
Any other questions or comments concerning this? It appears that we concur to place this on the action agenda for December 4th, 2017. That concludes those business agenda items. And now is under administration reports. And it appears that the first one we have is our police department. Do we have a representative of our police department in the audience? Yes, we do.
Just a quick update on a couple of things at the police department. In the last few weeks, up to a couple of months ago, we've hired some new folks. We hired Mary Davidson, some of you may have seen her up front, as a part-time records evidence clerk. Mary has been at Shelton most of her life. She worked at the Steamboat Vet Clinic for a while, and she's now hired up front as a part-time records clerk. She's a local, and she's a Choice High School graduate. So you may see Mary up front. Two weeks ago, we hired Brian Buckley as a record evidence clerk. Many of you know Lynn retired probably six months ago now. We finally found a couple of replacements to help with that. Brian came to us from the US Army, where he retired after 20 years of service with the US Army and working in special operations. He and his family have called Shelton home for the last two years, and he's another face you will see up front at the police department. We also, you may have seen on iFiber, and you may have seen Sierra Paulson around town, she's a new police officer. She was hired as a provisional officer several months ago. And two weeks ago, she accepted a full-time police officer position with us. She comes to us from the East Coast, where she was there for two years as a police officer, came out here and bought a home in Shelton, and decided this is where she wanted to stay. And now she works for us as a full-time officer. So that's just some of the staffing changes we've seen at the police department. On crime issues, I just wanted to let you folks know and let the citizens know, in the last couple of months, we've seen an uptick in burglaries. Not necessarily burglaries at homes, but burglaries in vehicles, in garden sheds, burglaries in garages, some of them being unsecure. I'd just like to remind folks, it is that time of year where try and keep your valuables locked up. Don't leave them out for people to see in your cars. When you're out doing your Christmas shopping, try and put those valuables hidden away somewhere in your trunk or otherwise. Most often, the vehicle burglaries tend to be, people leave laptops, purses, et cetera, sitting on the front seat of their cars and become crimes of opportunity. Other than that, we're holding our own and keeping crime at bay, other than, like I said, the uptick in thefts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns now.
Any questions or comments for our police chief?
I just have to say that one time out here, I accidentally locked myself out of the car, and Virgil came out to help me get in the car. And on the front seat was my purse, my cellphone, my laptop. I got a slight lecture. So I will second that. Put your stuff away.
We're all guilty of it. One of the other things I forgot to mention is Lieutenant Fiola has stepped forward and offered to work with the state on a traffic safety grant. And we used part of that recently at the school zones. We'll also be using it this weekend. We've got the Office of Traffic Safety to grant us some funding. We'll be doing some traffic enforcement, such as click it and tick it, not use your cellphones while you're driving, through our festivities this weekend to remind the citizens out there.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Next, we, I saw Chief Tim McKern back there, so he's got some colored flyers he gives us.
I'm going to give you some updates, because we had attorneys interview you folks a little bit, so I'm going to give you a little update. First off, I will say the weekend was rather, I won't use the Q word, but it was quiet. Our guys even called dispatch, because over the Saturday, Sunday period, I think the whole team did a whole whopping eight calls for the two days. And so, they were a little wondering why it was so quiet, so we did have a quiet statistic.
Was that one of the shopping?
I think so. Our statistics that you received was 5124, we're actually up to 5226, which puts us about 15.84 a day. And comparatively, we'll probably end up the year about 5780, and that's about up 10% from last year. Interestingly, on it, from our 2014 stats, it's up 21%. So that's quite a difference in a four-year jump. The city itself will be up about 5. Currently, we are at 2367. We'll finish up around 2600, and that's up against 2258 back in 2014. So you can see we're having that gradual but steady increase on the way up as we get there. I also included in there some turkey fryer information. Obviously, we're beyond Turkey Day, but I wanted to share that with you. And really, what's really changed in that is that people aren't using that type of tool, they're using more of an air fryer, they're getting a little more safer, and that's great to do that. Questions we ask a lot of folks is, you know, when they're doing that, are they, first off, are they doing it in their garage? Do they have an extinguisher handy? Most of those answers, as you said, with your purse and stuff, putting it on the table, you don't think about those crazy things like, hey, do I have to use the fire extinguisher? And so I know we've been really promoting that pretty heavy, and we have on the radio as well. Now, the other one is Christmas tree safety. A lot of folks, if they elect to put their Christmas trees up early, we encourage citizens not to do so. In other words, remember that even though it's wet outside, it's going to dry out fairly quickly, and then you put Christmas lights on there. Those fresh trees have a tendency to want to go up fairly rapidly. We encourage the citizens to also use our trash program to pick up the trees. We'll set them up during a period of time at the end, so that all the folks can get that picked up as well. So that's where we're at for safety on the holidays. Questions?
Thank you.
Well, Chief, you're doing a great job out there, keeping our community safe. Thank you very much for your service. All right. Next, I don't know how to say this name, so I'm going to say someone is going to give a court's update. And I don't want to mispronounce it, so...
It's all right, Mayor. So I'm Diane.
Diane?
Smolinski.
Okay, well, even, unless they mispronounced, didn't spell this. Is that how you spell it? D-Y-A-N?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
All right, well, then I could have said that.
That's all right. Today, I wanted to present to you the community service overview for October 20th through November 24th for Shelton Municipal Court. The community service crew partnering with other city departments accomplished work at Neeland Street Lot, weed eating, cutting brush, cleanup, and dumped items, mowed, pulled weeds, scraped sidewalks. At Neeland Park, they raked leaves in the park and removed leaves from the dog park to the leaf pile. At the Civic Center, trimmed hedges and shrubs, removed some trimmings around the building. Let's see. In the offices, they removed some surplus chairs and office supplies from upstairs, took some of those to Choice High School and Habitat for Humanity and the Senior Center, and what was left went to the dump. In the community, they picked up litter, Cedar Street, Second Street, Grove Street, Fourth Street, Front Street, First Street, Wallis Neeland, sorry, Johns Prairie Road, Cota Street, Third Street, Shelton Springs Road, Railroad Avenue, SR3 Park and Ride on Highway 3, North Cliff, Neeland Park, Evergreen Square, Shelton Creek, and Trail Entrance. They cut shrubs and scraped sidewalks on First Street. The ongoing projects for the community service department, picking up litter in the city limits, cleaning weed eating, overgrown sidewalks, cleaning trails, cleaning up abandoned camps. And the numbers for the month, 1,970 pounds of garbage picked up, five yards of yard, five yards of yard waste. There were zero hypodermic needles this month. Total community service completions were eight people. Total people sentenced to community service were 91, and the total people placed on EHM and GPS for out of municipal court. That's it for the month. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Diane?
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your report.
And I'm going to step out, I have to get back to the court, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right. Next is community development, Mr. Mark Ziegler.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Another reminder that our comp plan will be coming to you in December. We will have a little update on December 11th and a public hearing on December 18th. The final environmental impact statement is on the website, the city's website, for those of the general public that'd like to take a look at that. And we will be releasing the comp plan here probably early next week for review leading into the public hearing. The notice to the paper will go out in proper avenues. Our Recreation Department is fully into the youth basketball season, our largest program that we conduct annually with an average attendance of about 250 youth throughout the county. So that started a week ago Saturday, and will run through the first Saturday of February. Within the Building Department, we've had 28 applications in November. No new single-family or duplexes, so it holds steady at 22 for the year for single-family residences duplex permits that have been issued. A total of 430 permits to date of permits, and that's up from 372 from 2016. So that's re-roofs, mechanical, plumbing, general. We did see a big uptick in August of 101 permits, which is more than double what we've seen normally, based on the natural gas work being done downtown and the new meters and new supplies to the residences, buildings, I guess. They're not all residences, but some commercial buildings downtown as well. So we saw an uptick from that. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any for me today.
Any questions, comments? Go ahead.
So the 22 houses is from January to the end of December?
Year-to-date.
Okay, great, thank you.
Through today.
Through today, yeah, well, I understood that. Okay. Still time to bring some new ones in.
Absolutely. Be happy to serve those people.
You said the preview comp plan will be up on December 11th for us?
We will update the city commission at the briefing on December 11th here, and then the public hearing will be the 18th in the evening commission meeting.
Thank you very much, Mark Ziegler. Appreciate it. All right. Next is a city manager report from our city manager, Ryan Wheaton.
In front of you, you have an updated version of what we gave last week. So this packet we dropped off right before the meeting is everything as it was when we handed it to you last week, save for the first page, which we've updated with a quick analysis of 12 regional neighbors. So Bermanton, Centralia, Chehalis, Dupont, Elmah, Hoquam, Lacey, Olympia, Port Orchard, Taino, Tomwater, and Yelm. Just to get an idea of what meeting times are held for cities around us. As you'll notice on this list, 11 of these 12 cities hold meetings twice per month. Five of the 12 also schedule regular study sessions that precede those meetings. We were a little surprised to see that all these cities meet on Tuesdays. And then, we're also surprised that so many of them meet at 7:00, which seems to be a very popular time. So we provided you with that. And just to look through that list on the back to tick off some of the progress that we've made in answering these questions. First thing that we needed to figure out was, can the election primary and, or primary in general be held in February and April? We did get word from the auditor, county auditor, last week that that looks like a very strong possibility, if we can get them resolution by December 11th. Secondly, the, we talked last week that candidates must file for specific positions, so positions 1 through 7, or in this case, 1 through 4. Also, the term length will be de- Also, the term length will be dependent on how many votes the winning candidates get. The top three vote-getting, winning candidates would have the long terms, and the winning candidate with the least amount of votes would get a smaller term to match up with the current schedule for commissioners. Next, we discussed last week the decision points, and from our perspective, not a lot's changed here, except for maybe the first one, districts versus at-large. With the time crunch that we're under, staff would strongly recommend having all seven positions at-large for the time being, and once the full council is seated, then we were assured by the city, or excuse me, the county auditor, that at that point, districts or combination of districts at-large could be determined afterward. It's not something that has to be done now. And again, our recommendation would be that all the positions be at-large for the upcoming election. Second on that list is council member salary. We provided information last week and then also provided an example of what the salary may look like, but that's a decision that we're asking for you three to make in the next week or two. Second, I just spoke of the frequency of the meetings and the days of the week. We are strongly recommending that we move away from Monday meetings. I think I mentioned last week, week before, that we already miss about ten percent of our meetings a year due to holidays. This would allow us to get more in line with what other cities do, and then the frequency of these meetings, we're also requesting that be moved to line up with what other cities do as well, to have longer meetings but have them half as, or half as much. So we would look at meetings either the first and third week of the month or the second, fourth week of the month. And then the fourth component here is just looking at what committee options and other requirements that may be necessary for people to know as they think about filing to run for these positions. With that, I'll open up for any questions that you may have.
I like the Tuesday meeting time. I think that would be good, and I think that the two meetings in a month would probably be good, too. I'm looking at, I would probably recommend the first and the third rather than the second and the fourth. It seems most of our activity is in the first three weeks, so for decisions making, I would think that the first and the third, and these are just, I'm just kind of, I've been thinking about this a little bit, and I think that pretty much it looks like, I like the concept of the at-large because that gives a wide variety of people, and if you have two people in one area or one person in one area, it gives it, I think, a better, probably especially the first time out, a better opportunity to those people that want to get involved. So that's just things, and then the salary, you know, I've been thinking about it and looking at it, and it goes anywhere from zero to thousands. So, I mean, I think in order to get good people into these positions, you have to have a certain amount of money, but I think moving from a three-person to a seven-person would, I think, move it more into definitely a part-time kind of job situation. So people, I would recommend no-day meetings. I would go for all-evening meetings, and I think that you could probably get a lot of people who are either retired or have a full daytime job to where they could probably perform their tasks under those. So that's just my ramblings on the subject, but I don't have any, any, that seems to be the way it kind of fits in.
I have a question. Would it be a possibility to have some public meetings with the public to talk about per diem, travel, health insurance, salary, whatever has to do with this? Is there a possibility of doing that?
If you want to open this up to the public for them to tell you what council members should make, we could certainly do that.
Just get some ideas, what the public is thinking.
We can do that. We're on a short timeline. We will, we need to decide in the next two weeks.
Okay.
But if the three of you would like us to invite the public in, we can certainly do that.
Well, I think informing the public is good, and so I, because we're on a tight, very tight timeline, you know, I don't know, I don't know if we would have time to do it and analyze the data and get it back in time.
We can set something up, and I would point out, we haven't put out anything in terms of a press release yet because we're waiting for the election to be certified, but once the election's certified tomorrow, we will have an informational piece that goes out to people.
Is there any reason why, I mean, we can, we can, if, since the past, we know it's coming, is there a reason why we can't extend it out until we get some questions answered?
I think to be fair to people that are going to run for these positions, they're going to need to file likely in December, and so we would want to let those folks know what the structure is going to look like.
I'm, I know that a number of citizens will be disappointed that our first time around, we're not going to be running for specific districts or have specific districts, but I believe from what I have heard that being timely on this would be the first choice, and then leave it up to the larger council to make those type of decisions. So it's not precluded in the transition that we will go to, to districts. I agree with what Gary said about the meetings. I believe that the first and third Tuesday would be better. They all definitely have to be at night, in my opinion, and then I think seven o'clock seems really late, but that could be just that we're used to that seven o'clock time. I know that a number of people who may be interested in running for council work in Olympia, work outside of town, and so they're barely getting back into town by our six o'clock meeting, so I do think we need to make them a bit later. And that's it, that's what I have to say.
Sounds fun. Tuesdays, any nights fine with me.
So I did have one more question. So as far as the, the salary and the benefits and things like that, I guess I'm not really sure where, what we are going to have to make our, base our decision on for that, and we have the comparison of like cities. So we could just use an average of that.
You could. If there's some other information that you'd want us, we'd need to know pretty quick, so we'd work on it this week and try to bring it back to you next Monday.
Okay, okay, that sounds great.
Off the top of my head, or thinking about this, I think the move to this situation when Scott Hillburn voted our, or proposed our salaries and benefits twenty, seventeen years ago or something, I don't know, you know, health insurance was a hundred bucks a month. Now we're facing huge. So because this is probably moving more into a part-time, definite part-time type of situation, I believe that the people that I think would running, I would probably lean towards leaving the healthcare out of it and increasing the, the wage a little bit if you compare the other like cities and whatnot. I would probably think that the city would probably, most people can get their health insurance from their regular job, which we all have regular jobs, I think most of us do, and I would probably say I would rather see the monthly salary probably maybe a little more than some of the other cities that offered benefits and that, because the benefits, we have no idea where health insurance is going to go. And if you're going to set up a seven-person council, I would probably say that's one of the things, if you're doing it and wanting to attempt to save money or at least keep things in the realm that we have been talking about, I would probably say that the health insurance would be, it's an unknown factor, and who knows what it's going to do. So I think we'd be, we'd be a lot more able to, to plan our future and budgets without that mystery of the health insurance, not that we don't have it with all the other employees. So my ideas would be to probably give a little bit more in the salary and a little less on the health insurance.
So I have a question. On the page two, it talks about the five-person council plus, down at the bottom, five-person council plus two reduced. What is the reduced and what is, so we see position one through four would be six thousand, five would be eighty-four hundred with a mayor, but then you have two currents, how, you get that number for the currents, the two current ones? That would be the one you're now? Okay.
Yeah, we went through this last week, so that, we're looking at three scenarios. The first one is the current situation. We have three commissioners that have a base salary of fifteen thousand six hundred, followed by the potential of meeting compensation at seventy dollars per meeting. The total is ninety-eight hundred dollars a year for a total, per commissioner of twenty-five thousand four hundred or seventy-six thousand dollars, seventy-six thousand two hundred dollars. That's the current situation. The other two scenarios are options that we presented. One would be that the two current commissioners that are, still have two years left in the term, nothing changes for them.
Okay.
That the first four positions, the non-mayor council positions, would be at six thousand dollars, and we did analysis of what council managers cities pay their mayor versus council members, and most of them, well, on average, they're just below forty percent. So we rounded that up to forty, and what you'd be looking at there would be, the mayor would make eighty-four hundred dollars. That would be a total change of seven thousand dollars more than we currently pay, currently pay three commissioners.
Okay.
The other option would be that it's similar, except for we've talked in the past about how commissioners can't change their own salary, which is true. The one thing that's different between the scenario of five council plus two current and five council plus two reduced is that the two current commissioners that are going to carry on, they can't change the base salary but can stop collecting seventy dollars per meeting. If that were done, we could save the city twelve thousand six hundred dollars from what we currently pay now. So those were the two options that we presented.
Okay, all right.
As we're looking at this, too, I guess I feel differently about the health insurance, or at least the provision for health insurance. I have a strong belief that health insurance should be available for all people, and so I would like to look at methods where possibly the council members, if they don't have other health insurance, they could maybe buy into the city plan. I don't know if that's allowed or not, but I just have a, have a difficult time with removing health insurance when it seems like it's such an important thing.
I think you've done a great job of putting this together for us, Ryan, and I think we're going to think about it a little bit more, and we'll probably come back next week with any more ideas and whatnot that we have. So does that include your report?
That's it for that.
Okay.
I have, I have something to add under this section, and since it's kind of involving city staff, I think if Craig doesn't mind, I would like to butt in now. Okay. I have had a number of communications from various members of our community who are concerned because there are rumors, true or not, there are rumors going around the city, and there is concern, and it's kind of adding to the turmoil that is current in our city, and that is that, that the mayor is trying to gather support for firing certain city staff, and I would just.
I can answer that.
Well, let me finish.
I know, go ahead.
I would like to really encourage that any decisions like that be placed on hold until the council, the full council is seated, to avoid any appearance of retribution or punishment or, or, you know, bad motivation. And so that, I, like I said, I don't know. I have not talked to the mayor about this, but I have heard from a number of different people who have this concern and have asked me to step forward and bring it to the light and try to make it a topic of conversation that we can have in the open, open, and so that's my statement.
So back to that subject is, this is not my intent, and that what we have is a gigantic smear campaign against me. And there are things that we do in life, we say to people, we talk to people, and it is not even in my slightest outreach of my imagination that I would be looking to be replacing Ryan Wheaton, okay? And, but at this point, what I'd like to say is, this, and I call it hate, this continual hate kind of thing against people, whether it's me against you or you against me or, or whatever we're feeling, it will destroy our city, far worse than any city council or commissioner making mistakes. And we, it is my goal to get past this, because this is, it's gossip, it's, it's, there are lies being said about me on the internet, flat out. I don't respond to all that stuff. I choose not to, and that half-truths, there's somebody said this, then somebody said this, and then it's like they have that game where you sit around with a bunch of kids where one kid says it's a red ball, and the next guy says it's a red hat, and then it's a blue ball, and then it's a blue hat. And that I just don't, gossip and all this stuff that's going on in the blogs and whatnot, I stood up for my mistakes, just like you did. We all make mistakes, and it is not in my intentions to do retaliation, or I'm still speaking, one more second, please. And so I'm just telling you that this is gossip, and it's the rumor mill, and it is a wake-up call, because the standards that are set for a commissioner or a councilperson or a public official are very high, as we know, when they can invade your personal Facebook page and take every comment you ever said and put it on the front page of a paper. So my concern is not, let's just put it this way, is we will, we will bury ourselves in hate if we continue down this road. And I would hope that we could get past this issue, get past the gossip, get past the he said, she said stuff, and I just flat out tell you right now, Ryan Wheaton is doing a great job for this community, and the rumor that I am looking to try and, in the dark, in the darkest part of my closet, that I sit there with a notebook trying to destroy his life, is unfortunately wrong. And so that's my ramblings on this subject, but we will destroy ourselves if we continue with this hateful, mud-slinging stuff, and I choose not to do it. So from this point forward, I'd rather just let it fly by me, okay? So, did that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
So.
I thought it would, it was a lot.
It was a lot.
Okay.
So do you deny that you have initiated those conversations with members of the public?
I'm not going to answer you anything, okay? I'm not going to continue down this, stop, okay? I'm not going to continue down this game.
I'm not playing a game, Gary. I'm trying to be a responsible councilwoman.
Okay. I prefer to let the PDC handle this.
So we're not talking about the PDC. I asked you a question. Do you deny initiating those conversations?
No comment. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, actually.
Very good.
It does answer my question.
Very good. Okay, is there anything more you have to say?
Not right now, thank you.
So, let's take a look and see where we are. We were talking about a dye test, I believe, and were you going to talk about that?
Yeah, and then we've got one other thing to also touch on that we failed to last week, but we reported to you on the joint effort to take a look at the sewage treatment plant and pollution into Oakland Bay a few weeks back, and just an update coming up this week, at the end of the week, starting on Friday morning at around four o'clock AM, the state, feds, squawks and tribe will all be at the Shelton Waste Water Treatment Plant to do, start injection, injection into the discharge out into Oakland Bay. So you could see Oakland Bay turn a tint of red sometime throughout the day on Friday into Saturday, and then the members of that team will be out in the bay, actually out in the water, doing some testing of how that flows in and out.
out in the water, doing some testing of how that, uh, flows in and out of Oakland Bay. And we just want to reiterate from before, the sensitivity that we do have towards our neighbors in the shellfish industry, uh, that we have out towards the wastewater treatment plant. And we are meeting all of our discharge permit requirements at this time, and have not had a discharge violation, uh, in the last eighteen months. So we are cooperating with that team, uh, to make sure that our processors, processes are staying, uh, up to standards and that we are doing everything that we can possibly do, uh, to ensure that that continues. So you should see that starting, uh, on Friday, uh, early in the AM and continuing into the weekend.
How far does that dye go out?
Uh, that's actually what they're trying to take a look at. They're seeing what that flow does, uh, in and out of, uh, Hammersley Inlet, and to see out at Arcadia Point if that water is actually just fluxing back and forth, or if it's actually getting out, uh, and we're getting new water back in. So that is one thing that they are taking a look at. Um, so we'll be able to report back, uh, as soon as they're done with the test and, and we get some results back from that.
Okay.
So I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can, um, on this one, if you have any others.
I'm, I'm just looking forward to getting the answer once and for all. Hopefully it will identify where the problem is.
And that is one thing with this test, they're not just taking a look at the wastewater treatment plant, they are literally looking at every residence up and down, uh, Hammersley Inlet, uh, to see if we have failing septic systems also.
I was going to ask that.
I think that generally that's the assumption, is that it probably is failing septic, but the dye test should let us know where those are concentrated.
Sure.
Okay.
And we don't want to confuse that with a red tide.
Uh, definitely not.
Right. All right. Any other questions or comments?
So we do have one other, uh, article to talk about that we failed to mention last week or get direction on. Uh, we did update you on the Turner Street project that was only partially funded through TIB. We are looking for some direction. So the portion that TIB funded was the section between Seventh and Sixteenth, uh, and that was split into sections, uh, because TIB actually encouraged us to do that, that is the way they like to see their applications, in case there is a road section that isn't failing as much as another, that they can partially fund. Um, and with the larger project of the downtown connector project, uh, they couldn't quite fund that entire project. So as we move forward with design and survey work, um, we're looking at the hill section from First to Seventh, and need some direction from the commission on whether they would like us to move forward, um, with that being on the city's dime, or if they, if you think that the hill section is adequate at this time, and we would just leave that section and pave from Seventh to Sixteenth. The one section that, as far as staff goes, is really pushing, um, to get done is, if you've been up in that area, the section between Angle Side Road and Seventh, it's about a four-hundred-foot section, it's failing, uh, fairly rapidly. Um, so we would suggest that we do that portion, um, out of city funds, uh, outside of this TIB project. It would be bid with the project if we move forward with that, but that is the decision, I think, that we need to make, is, do we do anything, or do we do the section just between Seventh and Angle Side Road, or do we go all the way to First Street?
So we could include the First to Seventh part in the bid before we make a decision?
It would be a separate schedule, so when we put that bid packet together, you would have one schedule that was from First to Seventh, and then another schedule that was bid, uh, separately between Seventh and Sixteenth, but it would be done as one large project.
And then we could choose not to do the First to Seventh, depending on the bid.
You could. You could see where the bids come back. The TIB money, depending on where the bids came in at, um, would not be able to fund any of that section, even if it were under budget. Um, it doesn't look like it's going to be at this point, and it looks like a fairly solid number, um, that we put together, so it would be, uh, the total cost of that. So the section between First and Angle Side Road, uh, would run, um, in the neighborhood of around a hundred and fifty thousand, and then the section between Angle Way and Seventh Street would be around fifty thousand. So that entire section's about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar, um, project, but the main portion that's failing now would be around fifty thousand.
Would it be possible to take, uh, you have all of your road projects, you know, for 2018 lined up, so I guess it's all a matter of priorities too. I mean, if you have a budget, because this two-hundred thousand would be above your budget, would that be for?
We haven't set a 2018 budget, uh, at this point, um, so that would be something that we would need direction on fairly quickly to add that into the budget, um, for 2018.
Well, I'm just, you know, it might be that that's more important than something else.
And I, and I think that is the question, does it rank higher than some of the residential streets that we had, uh, proposed to do for next year, because we had, uh, proposed to do twenty residential blocks, um, throughout the city? So is that a priority over doing either the entire section from First to Seventh, or just that section from Angle Way to Seventh Street? Um, and like I said, at this point, um, I am really up on the, up in the air on whether we would do from First to Angle Way, but I think staff's recommendation would be, we at least move forward with the section between Angle Way and Seventh Street.
That is awful.
It is failing rapidly.
Which part is the Angle Way? Is that the curved?
Angle, Angle Way is that very tight corner before you get to Turner that comes up at kind of a skewed angle. That is something that we have been looking at, uh, with the engineering staff, as to how we could actually straighten that corner out just a touch and make that a ninety, uh, degree into Turner Street to make it a little safer and improve sightline angles also.
Just, um, my initial reaction is that I feel like we have to honor the promises that we made to our citizens for the twenty blocks that we promised to pave, pave throughout the city. So my initial reaction is, I feel like we have to do that and, um, find the money to do the Angle Way to Seventh. I'd like to do the whole thing, but I, I feel really strong that, especially with the transportation benefit district that our citizens passed, that we made some promises, and we need to really honor those. So that's my feeling.
Well, my feeling is to stay within budget, so, I mean, if there's a less important project or something, you know, if the money's there, you know? But, uh, we haven't completed our budget process, so you're in charge of your division and you're, you're, and you're bringing this forward. If roads are failing, they need to be taken care of, but, uh, borrowing money to do these things, you know, outside of the budget is probably not my first choice.
I do agree that we need to keep that promise to our citizens. We, you know, promised twenty streets in the next year, if we can somehow find a happy medium with both projects.
Just don't have any major pumps break.
That is a different fund.
Yeah. So that's my-
You were talking about general fund money, uh, neither, not, not the utilities, so that is what we are looking at as far as funding these, um, would be general fund money.
Yeah. Okay.
So did that answer your questions?
Uh, not exactly.
You kind of got three different opinions, didn't you? If you can find the money, do it. If you can't, I don't know, you know? What would you do? Just borrow money?
I, I think it would be a, a priority at that point of, what do we cut out of the general fund to get this taken care of?
Police cars, right?
And how-
Different fund, sorry.
Same fund.
It's the same fund.
Same fund. Um, so yeah, it would really come down to, I guess, how much of a priority is either that entire section, or is the section between Seventh and Angle Side, um, how important is it to this commission?
We did, um, a couple of years ago, we did an overlay, I think, of the Turner from First to Angle Way. Or did we go further?
We did to Seventh Street.
And so, why is that failing?
That was a patchwork of City Crews.
Oh, that was a patch.
Um, it was an overlay of that entire section, but we knew we had, uh, failing road bed within that, um, and knew that that was only a Band-Aid, and that was done, gosh, it's been five or six years ago now, so that's been a pretty decent Band-Aid. I think we only spent, uh-
Fifteen thousand?
I want to say it was like forty thousand is what we spent on that roadway.
Yeah.
So it was a decent Band-Aid to get us through that five or six-year period that is failing at this point. Um, the hill section doesn't seem to be as, as bad, um, as that upper section, and I think it's just, uh, because of the elevation change, we get better runoff, um, it's not getting down into that road bed, but-
Yeah, it does seem like it was less years than that, but I guess that's a moot point. If it's failing, it's failing.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's look at this for a second. You, you'd kind of like an answer soon, because the budget, I mean, you would like to know from us what to do.
Not only budget purposes that we're moving forward, and I think Nola's team really needs to take a look at it, but also design, um, we would really like to try to get this out and get this constructed before we get to Basin Three and the connector project, which is later in the spring.
I have your answer.
Just because of staffing levels.
I got your answer. It appears that two of the commission are leaning towards doing it, and I don't know the, the one-fifty, or the fifty, or both of them. It appears they're leaning towards doing that, even possibly at the risk of borrowing some money to do it. And I'm not, is that what we're-
We don't have any money to borrow for it.
We're not borrowing money.
I don't think.
There isn't a funding source other than city.
So, so if you don't have it in your budget, you would have to cut something to do that one, right?
The three of you would have to prioritize and cut something. It, it's out of the general fund budget, which is not just my budget, it's, it's my budget, it's Nola's budget, it's Darren's budget, it's-
Okay, so let me carry the thought a little bit farther down the road here. So if you're asking us to fund the one-fifty, or, which one is the most important, the one-fifty or the fifty?
The fifty is the most important section.
That's really got to be done. Okay. I think we could all probably agree that we could find someplace, because if you're asking to cut something, I'm asking for where are my options to cut it.
Sure.
We could probably all agree that we would do that. Two of us may agree that we do the whole two-hundred, and that we just have to cut someplace else, but I don't know where we would cut it. So if the city manager has an idea on that-
Well, if the preference is to make sure that we get the most important thing done, we can prioritize that before we bring the budget back, and then, should there be, I doubt there's going to be an extra hundred and fifty that we could cut, but we can leave that on the back burner for now and then focus on the most important part, which is failing.
And I think I was pretty clear, I hope I was pretty clear, that, uh, the, um, uh, Angle Side to Seventh was my priority up there.
Yeah. You did make yourself clear.
And that's the fifty-dollar, thousand dollar one?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so we want it done.
It's kind of a-
At least the fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Craig, do we have, how much is budgeted to do the, um, and I realize it depends street to street, but how much is budgeted for the twenty blocks that we have promised?
It's around a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
For those twenty blocks.
Okay.
And I would agree with you, I, I, I don't think that we should get away from those twenty residential blocks. Actually, the good news is some of, there are a few of those twenty residential blocks that will most likely be side roads off of Turner Street, uh, that we may be able to, uh, couple with the project like Holly Drive, um, up at the top of Turner, um, was slated to be done by City Crews. It might be as cheap or cheaper to have the contractor do it while he's, uh, they're doing Turner.
That would be good, yes.
Also, so there are a few of those that were up in that Angle Side area.
Okay.
Um, that may get done also, but yeah, I do agree with you that those twenty blocks most likely should stay on there, and it was about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Is that it? Do we need to make any more decisions?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, and our next meeting will be December fourth at six PM in the evening. This meeting here is adjourned.